Welcome to the Board of Education meeting for Well County School District Six on this, the 24th day of February 2020. This meeting will now come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Crane, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hayfley?
Present.
Mrs. Mash?
Present.
Mr. Matthews?
Present.
Mrs. Mueller?
Present.
Ms. Pappas?
Present.
Mrs. Solis?
Present.
Mr. Tally? Six members present.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Here in District Six, we talk about engaging and empowering and inspiring. That is critical to our mission. And one of the ways that we engage, we want to always engage students, but as we see here tonight, it's equally important to engage parents. And right now, we have a parent survey that you can take online. And so if you're watching this at home, or if you're here in the audience and you've yet to complete that survey, I've yet to complete my survey, but please, by the end of the week, be so kind to do that for us. We do want to know what you think about the district and what your concerns are and successes and where we need to improve. So if you take a moment, please do that for us. Under empowering, nominations are still being taken through today for Classified Employee of the Year. And so our classified employees are those people who are often not seen. They're the people behind the scenes, supporting our teachers, our bus drivers, and our nutrition specialists, and our custodians, and those people that make a big difference in our school. And so you've got till the end of the day to fill out that nomination for Classified Employee of the Year. And then under inspiring, it's often our students that inspire us. And tonight, we will have the Dream Team students here. Many of them headed off to college in just a few months. But also, I saw that we have Ms. Olson here tonight and wanted to recognize the Northridge High JROTC Rifle Team for placing sixth at the Marine Service Championships in Selma, Alabama. Their sixth-place finish has earned them a ticket to the national competition in Ohio in March. So congratulations to Northridge and to the JROTC. We're now to the portion of the meeting where we're going to hear people desiring to speak before the board. And tonight, I believe, we have just one person. And I'll invite Mr. Josh Wayne Scott to the podium to speak. And Mr. Wayne Scott, I'll remind you that you have two minutes, and we won't respond to you, but perhaps someone can follow up with you after the meeting. Thank you.
Well, thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Josh Wayne Scott, and I am a proud Brentwood Bengal parent, Hyman Husky parent, Maplewood Mustang employee, and GEA member. The past few times, I've been coming here to talk about the impact of caring adults in a child's life. We've talked about supportive response relationships, core life skills that are in a child's life, and how these impact adulthood. Support-responsive relationships, remember that those are adults that are stable and impactful in a child's life from birth as they move forward into their adolescence. Core life skills are things that help children learn to manage their life, work, and relationships as they progress through life. But the last thing that goes into helping make sure that happens is how do we reduce sources of stress within children's lives? When parents can meet families' essential needs, teachers and caseworkers have effective training in manageable class sizes and caseloads, and policies and programs are structured and delivered in ways that reduce stress rather than amplify it. Families are better able to take advantage of community services that help support healthy child development. So just by reducing sources of stress, we can increase the number of services that our families have access to as we go through. Stress leads to a biological overload without a supportive relationship. This goes into the brain and into the body. However, if there is a positive supportive relationship with a child, that stress begins to be acting like a muscle, and it can be worked, it can be stretched, and it can be brought in with the help of that adult. Now, as we move forward, the question is, so what? Who cares? I've been here for the past few times talking to you about this, and I'm sure you're all wondering, who cares? Why are you here? So next time, what I plan to do is I would like to talk to you about why I'm here talking about this. What does the research say about policies and practices that impact this? And really, what does this guy want out of everything? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wayne Scott. We're now to our work session report. So Ms. Crane, will you give us, update us on what we've been doing for the last couple hours?
Board of Education President Michael Matthews began the work session with comments and updates from board members and briefly reviewed the calendar of upcoming events. The board received information about the priority improvement schools and discussed community engagement. The board concluded the work session with a debrief and attended the reception for the Greeley Dream Team Scholarship recipients.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. We're now to our superintendents' reports. So Dr. Pilch, will you give us your update?
Thank you, President Matthews. I want to start with just thanking all of you and the members of our community who attended the February 12 revisioning day for District Six. I actually saw at least one of the students who spent the day with us walk in tonight. So thanks for being here, man. So it was a great day, lots of good feedback. Really, had about 120 people there that day. Some people had to come and go, but great information. And I want to tell you, even though we haven't named our new plan, people are already saying Innovation 2030. So last week, in two different meetings, I heard people say, well, with Innovation 2030. So we'll see. We'll see what y'all decide, if that's what we want it to be called. But again, thank you to everyone who participated, and lots more to come on that over the next several months. Last week, President Matthews and Chief of Safety and Security John Gates and Chief of Communications Teresa Myers and our Executive Assistant Christina Crane attended a Greeley Day at the Capitol. I want to thank all of you for representing District Six down at the Capitol and for putting our voice in the room around K-12 public education. So thank you to all of you for attending. The Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. So we've been waiting, and we had about 20, not about, we had 29 applicants who applied to serve on the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. We closed those applications Friday afternoon, and so 15 of those people will be selected. So I think that's a pretty good response that we received. They will be selected by the Business Advisory Council, who advises me. There are several members of our business community who will select those participants for that committee, and that selection will occur next week, and we should have the new committee members notified by the end of next week. So we're looking forward to that work. First meeting on that team is coming up in April. I want to give you a little update on the hiring of our Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Schools. As you all know, in January, Dr. Hannaford left us to go to the Colorado Department of Education. So we've done a national search. It's been very competitive. We have excellent candidates in the candidate pool. We start this week with some screening interviews. Actually, as soon as tomorrow, we'll be doing some screening interviews over Skype and then, or Google Hangouts. And then we'll bring candidates back next week to interview, full day of interview with a large interview team, some time touring a couple of our secondary sites, some time actually working on a task and preparing a task, then to present later in the day to Cabinet, and then a full meeting with our Cabinet, my executive team. And then there'll be a public reception the evening of March 5. Thank you. The evening of March 5, there'll be a public reception from probably 5:30 to 6:30 that evening, but we'll get that out to you all, so you get that on your calendar. I'll work with Mrs. Crane tomorrow to make sure we get that out to folks, so they can hold that time to meet those finalists. And then we'll probably bring back two or three from that group to do yet another round of interviews with me, possibly some other members of our executive team, but hope to have that position filled by April 1, with the latest start date being July 1. So we're really excited about the interest in the district and the candidates who have applied and come forward for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. We now need to approve an agenda before we go any further for tonight, and so if somebody would make a motion for us to proceed.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, Ms. Crane, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries six-zero.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. We also need to approve our consent agenda, and this also is an item that requires a motion, so if someone would be so kind.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves items as presented on the consent agenda and authorizes the officers to sign any and all contracts.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, Ms. Crane, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries six-zero.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. We're now going to get a report from our Council of Student Representatives, so I'll invite them to come, our students, to come to the podium. And Dr. Pilch, I'll give this portion over to you.
Thank you, President Matthews. While the students are making their way to the podium, I'll just make a little public comment that in the consent agenda tonight was the hire of the first two administrators this year of our hiring season, Mr. Jeff Collins, the Assistant Principal and Athletic Director at Northridge High School, and Mr. Bob Williams, the assistant, to-be Assistant Principal at Prairie Heights Middle School. So congratulations to both of them. Hello, students.
Hello.
Nice to see you again so soon.
Nice to see you.
I'm going to just pass it to you all and let you introduce yourselves, and you all take the podium as you'd like.
Good evening. My name is Jorge Aldana. I'm a student at Early College Academy. I'm a 12th grader.
I'm Penny Yarnie from Frontier Academy. I'm an 11th grader.
My name is Alan Canales, and I'm a senior at Early College Academy. I just came to thank you guys for inviting us to the revision. It was an honor to be there, and I was honestly inspired. I felt like we got a lot done that day, and I look forward to seeing what we can make out of it.
We just wanted to inform you that coming up in Semester Two, we have a couple of big events planned with our group, including helping host the Success Foundation fundraiser breakfast and putting on a district-wide volleyball game, which Alan will tell you about.
Some more information on the volleyball tournament we're having. It's a district-wide volleyball tournament that we're having, most likely at Central on March 26. We're inviting all the high schools to participate in this event, as we think it can help the schools connect and just hang out. Not only that, but we're using this as a fundraiser to help raise money for the wildfires in Australia.
And that is all. Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for all the work that you do and the time that you guys put in, especially taking a day out of your schedules, which I know were just as busy as any of ours last week to serve helping in revision our district. We're now to our Dream Team Scholarship presentation that I mentioned earlier, so I'm going to, well, I'll turn this over to you, Dr. Pilch.
Thank you, President Matthews. You know, we have so many very important partnerships here in District Six, partnerships that help us to ensure that students are college and career-ready. And one of those most remarkable partnerships is this partnership with the Greeley Dream Team. And it's my honor to introduce Elizabeth Barber, the Executive Director, to come forward and share a little bit with us tonight, and then we will do some scholarship recognition.
Yeah. Well, thank you so much, President Matthews, members of the board, Dr. Pilch. We are thrilled to be here tonight to introduce you to our latest round of scholarship recipients. Standing here with me is Miranda Ochoa. She is our Programs Coordinator, and she'll be helping us give the awards out tonight. The Greeley Dream Team is a nonprofit organization. We partner with District Six. We work with a diverse population of students, building relationships. We mentor, empower, and educate today's students to help them transition to college, because we know that they're going to be our leaders of tomorrow. For over 30 years, the Dream Team has assisted in helping make college a reality for many students. In fact, in the past 18 years alone, the Dream Team has given out more than $443,000 in scholarships to over 350 deserving students, and tonight, we will celebrate our newest recipients. The scholarship is offered to students in our program who have demonstrated academic potential, have volunteered and participated in clubs at their school and community service activities, and some have overcome personal obstacles. This year, a total of $30,500 will be awarded in scholarships. Our board has voted to elect the scholarships this year at $1,500 for 16 deserving seniors. We also have two additional scholarship opportunities tonight, new this year, which we are excited to celebrate. The Delia and John Hayfley Scholarship, valued at $1,500, honors two longtime Greeley educators who wish to make a lasting impact in our community and honor a student in need. And we also have the Bond Family Summit Award, valued at $2,500, who benefit two Dream Team Scholarship recipients who show great academic potential. So at this time, students, I will announce your names as I call you forward. Please come up and receive your envelope. And parents and family members, I'd ask that we hold our applause until we read all of their names. So first is Genesis Aguilar Vargas from Greeley Central High School. It's hard not to clap, right? Mary Ann Avia Castillo, Greeley Central High School. Aleah Bailey, Greeley Central High School. Evelyn Chanchevak Pastor, Greeley West High School. Heidi Gebetta, Greeley Central High School. Genesis Hernandez Garcia, Greeley West High School. Alexis Holguin, Greeley West High School. Annalise Juarez, Greeley Central High School. Angel Lachuga Gonzalez, Northridge High School. Yriel Loyah Lopez, Northridge High School. Josiah Madera Medamontes, Northridge High School. Rebecca Rivas Pacheco, Greeley Central High School. Julieta Sanchez Medrano, Greeley Central High School. Right next to Rebecca. Michael Serna, Greeley Central High School. Victoria Solis, Greeley Central High School. And Emily Vega, Greeley West High School. Our Delia and John Hayfley Scholarship goes to Rodrigo Perez Campos Jr. of Greeley West High School. And our Bond Family Summit Award goes to Genesis Hernandez Garcia and Angel Lachuga Gonzalez. Ladies and gentlemen, members of the board, Dr. Pilch, this is your 2020 Dream Team Scholarship Honors recipients. Members of the board, if you'd like to come up and take photos with the students? Do you need a crowd? Do you want me to move anybody else? Well, on behalf of the Greeley Dream Team Board of Directors and our staff, we just want to thank so much District Six School Board members, Dr. Pilch, the administration, for our continued partnership. Together, our work is making the difference in the lives of many students in our community. Thank you so much.
It's a first read of Policies GC, Note Page Administrative Staff, and GDMD, Classified Staff Continuing Education Employee Fellowship. And this is a first read, so it won't require action from us tonight. But Dr. Pilch, would you like to give us some information about what we will be voting on in another meeting or so?
Thank you, President Matthews. So these are two policies that we're recommending repeal on. We actually have the same information within other handbooks within the district, and they're not required by the Colorado Association of School Boards, so anytime we get a chance to pull policies, because we've got the information covered somewhere else, I'm making that recommendation to you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Next item of business is the revisions to our G-Policies, and those are personnel policies, and this is an action item that requires a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six revises the G-Personnel Policies as presented.
Second.
Before we begin discussion on these policies, Dr. Pilch, is there any information you would like to give us on this group of policies?
Thank you, President Matthews. You may recall that last board meeting, we gave you a pretty large section of the G-Policies. These are personnel policies. These are the policies around how we work with and for and about our employees, our adults in the system. This is the next section of those. There will be a few more policies that will still come to you again next month that are personnel policies. I know you all have had a chance to review them, and some of you have asked questions about some of them prior to tonight's meeting, but I'd be happy to take any further questions you might have.
Are there any comments or questions, points of discussion from board members? As Dr. Pilch said, we've had plenty of time to look these over, so seeing none, Ms. Crane, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries six-zero.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Next item of business is the second read in adoption of Policy ADE Innovation in Education. And because this is a second read, we will be taking action on this tonight, and so we will need a motion to proceed.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six adopts Policy ADE Innovation in Education as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Dr. Pilch, any information you would like to give us on this before we discuss?
Yes, thank you, President Matthews. I will just remind you that this is a new policy that actually governs our actions around adopting and approving and implementing schools of innovation. We have not had this policy in the past, as it was not required, but, you know, we do have five schools of innovation now in District Six, so Dr. Dattery and I have worked, Dr. Dattery worked, to bring this policy forward. As you know, tonight in Consent Agenda, you did approve the renewal of Prairie Heights, Prairie Heights Franklin's and Billy Martinez Innovation Plans.
And Fred Chartis.
Fred Chartis. And Fred Chartis. So, you know, this is a new policy, and I believe a much-needed policy in our current environment, where schools of innovation are a choice in our district. So I'm recommending approval.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Mr. Hayfley?
Dr. Pilch, I need to compliment you, as well as your cabinet, for your willingness and ability to be malleable, to address the needs of our students and our staffs. There was a period of time in this district where everybody had to be in lockstep and do the exact same thing, and due to your leadership and the foresight of the cabinet, you know, we've changed, and we've seen the success due to your willingness to be able to allow students and teachers to do what they know is right. So thanks to all involved.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Pappas?
I agree with Mr. Hayfley, but I also want to thank our voters again for passing the bond, because as we look at this innovation policy and the innovation schools, I know they've already got plans in place and in their mind of what they'd like to do. So thank you to our voters for passing the bond and allowing that opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Pappas. Are there any other questions or comments from board members on this particular item? All right. Seeing none, Ms. Crane, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries six-zero.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Our last item tonight is also a second read and a repeal of our EBCE School Closings and Cancellations and EEAEF Video Cameras on Transportation Vehicles. And again, this is an action item that requires a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six repeals Policies EBCE School Closings and Cancellations and EEAEF asterisk Video Cameras on Transportation Vehicles as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Dr. Pilch, any information you'd like to give us on this one?
Thank you, President Matthews. So the first one, EBCE School Closings and Cancellations, we are recommending repeal as, that actually is a memo that we present annually to staff as we look at our procedures and policies around cancellations or closings or late starts. Really doesn't belong in board policy. It's really more of an administrative bulletin, so we're recommending repeal on that. And then we're recommending repeal on EEAEF Video Cameras on Transportation Vehicles, because you all have already approved another policy on security cameras on district sites and in school transportation vehicles. And so we're already covered in that policy, and so we'd recommend repeal, which, because of the passage of the MLOV override, we added cameras to our high schools and our middle schools, and now we're working on a plan to do the exteriors and the main areas in our elementaries and K8s. With those purchases, we adopted district-wide policy for security cameras in buildings.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Any questions, comments, discussion points from board members? All right. Well, I would just echo what you said. Thanks to our voters for passing that MLO, and we have cameras now, not just on buses, we have cameras in schools as well, and they're very helpful to us. And so we appreciate our voters for passing that MLO. Ms. Crane, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries six-zero.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Well, that was a quick meeting tonight, but that is all the business that we have tonight, so this meeting is adjourned. So this meeting is adjourned.